Now, we will begin the council study session for June the 13th. Again, we excuse Councilmember Duff, who's out of town. The first item on the agenda for this meeting is to review the agenda for our June 17th council meeting. So, council, please refer to that agenda. Currently, there are no items off of the consent agenda.
Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Brady.
We need to remove item 4B from the agenda, please.
Okay. Item 4B is off of the agenda. Mr. Luna.
Mayor, I had just a question on 5B and with Mr. Brady or...
Yeah. We decide, Mr. Butler and Beth, are you going to respond to that?
Welcome.
Mayor, Councilmember Luna, I think your question dealt with the uniform license agreement that we're adopting. This is conform with new state law that requires all cities and towns to adopt this resolution by, or adopt this ordinance by July 1st of this year. It goes back to a state law change, not this legislative session, but the previous one, where we worked with, the league worked with the cable industry to streamline and work with their desire to find one uniform agreement that they could work throughout the state. Their concern was the time and effort it took to negotiate separate agreements with all 91 cities and towns. And we, at the end of the day, felt it was a fair compromise, as in most things in the legislature. We didn't get everything we wanted. I'm sure Cox Communications and some of the other leading proponents of the legislation would have said the same thing, but we feel comfortable adopting this. Beth and her team have been working diligently on this and have shown this legislation, or shown this to the, to the industry.
To the providers, yeah.
And they feel comfortable with the form that we're bringing to you today.
So, this isn't intended to eliminate any of the PEG channels that we have?
It does, it does impact channels moving forward, right Beth, on the limitations? I don't think it will have a negative impact, if I understand.
No, it won't. We can still have two channels of public educational government access and then two channels of non-commercial government access, which we work with the school district on. So, those channels are still there. All of that kind of basic structure is still there. There is a certain format, you know, it's digital, I guess, versus HD, I think, is the one question we still are discussing with them. But it does still allow us access to the channels.
Mayor and councilmember, I'm sorry. That came about because some cities were utilizing more PEG channels than the city of Mesa and Mesa Public Schools currently is, so it did not have an impact on us, even though it does provide some limitations on the number of PEG channels that cities can have.
So, will they be required to provide HD channels? So, as we look at Mesa Public Schools, for example, or City Mesa, do, will they...
My memory, and forgive me, I, my memory is they're not required to do it, but I think we're having conversations with them. I'll double check on that and get back to you, because I don't want to give you some misinformation, so.
So, will they provide the equipment to, in order for us to deliver and broadcast via HD?
I'll have to, I'll have to check on that.
Okay.
That's a conversation that's still in progress.
Okay, great. Just let me know as soon as you get that information.
The one thing this agreement does do, and the legislation does do, is that from time to time, we get complaints on service. Those complaints are now handled through the Office of Administrative Hearings. We can certainly help people get there and find the right people to do that.
Yeah, Mayor and councilmember, that was one change that cities and towns, including Mesa, thought was positive change, because many times, you would have constituent calls with concerns about their cable service, and there was absolutely nothing that you could do.
Right.
And the expectation was, though, that the city could force a private company to enhance their service or to reach certain neighborhoods, and that was just obviously something that we were not able to do as a city. So, we made it clear through this legislation, there is a process that Mesa residents can use, but it's through the state, and there's one uniform office to adopt that.
What about our public safety channels? Are those still going to be available, or...
I believe those are not being affected. We're going to still have those as well.
Okay. Correct. Mayor and councilmember, that was part of this discussion as well, as Beth references the non-public channels. So, besides Channel 11 and Mesa Public Schools channel being secured through this, the public safety channels were as well.
That was important to follow us, so. The other thing to note is, we will be back with follow-up action after the summer break, I believe, right Jim? This legislation does require us to make some city code changes, so we'll be back with city code changes later, after the summer break. It's just that we need this in place by July 1st for the legislation.
Is there any issue with any franchise agreements? Does that remove us from any franchise agreements with the providers?
Mayor and councilmember, not yet. The way this legislation is written, it does not preempt any current franchise agreements, but when, when our franchise agreement expires and they're up for renewal, there are some limitations put in by this legislation about what we can ask for as a city and, and set some of those parameters.
Because there's always funding associated with a franchise agreement. Typically, the provider will provide funding to the PEG channels in order for them to operate. So, is that, is that something that's going to be eliminated, or is that...
Mayor and councilmember, it still allows some discussion between the city and those providers on issues like that, where they have been good community partners in the past and have helped fund some of those. It doesn't completely exclude those, but it also prevents cities from not moving forward with an agreement if they're not completely satisfied with that. But it does allow for the opportunity for those discussions to still occur.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
I had a couple of questions. Chris, on 4F, what are we doing on 4F? Are we, is that simply just reconfiguring existing space? Are we adding employees? Is there something going on there?
So, we've moved the group that was there from the fire department down to 708, and they took with them all of their furniture and everything with them. And so, we're backfilling the space that's now empty. So, we're able to put, so that's what we're doing. We're just backfilling. So, it's not additional staffing, it's just that all of the furniture and equipment that went with the fire inspection group moved down to 708, so they're down there.
So, what department are we moving over?
OMB and, who else is going up there?
Training.
Training, yeah. So.
Okay, perfect. And then on 4G, if we were to look at locking in a longer contract, would we get a reduced cost over that 6.8 million on fuel costs?
So, it's yours, Ed or Matt, or who wants to...
This contract was set up as a cost plus percentage of cost for our base diesel fuel. So, there's a baseline cost that gets evaluated on a weekly basis, and we have done this through reverse auction to try and set that cost, so that when prices go up, down, left or right, we're making sure that we're getting an effective price at any time that we buy fuel, because you may be able to hedge sometimes, but the market may be up when you hedge, and so if it drops, then you end up paying more. So, we wanted to set something up so that we're never paying too much in a particular time or too little in a particular time. And so, what we did is, we set this contract up with Mesa and several other agencies to try and get the volume. So, even though we do 6.8 million annually, this entire contract is substantially more than just what we do. So, we've, we've seen a very good discount with the way we set up our contract, and that's how we structured this contract.
Thank you, council. Other questions regarding Monday's agenda? All right, thank you. The next item on our agenda for this meeting, then, is item 2A. I say here a presentation and discuss an update on the programs and services provided by the Mesa Historical Museum. Leroy, welcome. Good to have you back with us.
Thank you very much. Let's, let me put on my glasses, so I can see what I'm doing. Okay. Are we up yet? Hmm? Okay. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, city staff. Thank you for taking time to see me and hear about the Mesa Historical Museum and what we have been doing for the last six months. When I last appeared before you, we had some very grand plans about reopening the Lehigh Campus, mounting a new exhibit, as well as restarting the membership program for the museum. As a background to this presentation, I want you to know that my predecessor had not sent out a membership letter since 2009. There had been no marketing plan or marketing budget in place since that same time period, and that during the time when the museum was exhibiting down on the Main Street location, the best exhibit attendance year was 2016, when they had over a 12-month period, an average of 1.78 people per day, which accounts for a little under 500 people during the year. In the fall, when I proposed moving us all back to, out of the Main Street space and into Lehigh, I was told that nobody was going to come to Lehigh and that no one was interested anyway. So, the question is, what have we done since we started this? All right. First, we had to complete 10 years of deferred maintenance on the buildings. This included patching and painting the exterior and interior of the old Lehigh School, repairing plumbing and electrical, repairing and recertifying the fire suppression systems, cleaning up the landscaping, and repairing and replacing air conditioners. This has all led to the reopening of the old Lehigh School. Here it is when I first came here in October, and here it is today with its facelift. So, we then opened in February, a show called Gizmos, Gadgets and Greatness: Technologies That Built Mesa 1877 to 1957. We still had no marketing plan and no marketing budget, so this was basically open the doors and see if word of mouth was going to do anything for us. We had an average attendance of 10.2 people per day, which is a more than 1,000% increase over what was going on at Main Street. 60% of them were from Mesa. 40% of our visitors were out of town or out of state. 40% of the visitors were adults, 40% seniors, with the remaining 20% children, which included school groups that we have begun to host. Using the 10-year-old membership list, I sent out a mailing to see if there was anybody still around from then, and we now have 40 paying members, which has resulted in a donated income of the year of, just in excess of $8,000, which is, again, a line item that did not exist for the previous 10 years. So, what's next? This summer, we will mount our first mass membership mailing. On September 14th, we're going to open a new show called Stitching Mesa Together. This is called Quilts, Crafts and Community, with items from the permanent collection. We're going to tell the story of how community is built through the shared learning of craft skills. This exhibit includes artists from the Salt River Indian Community, as well as local craftspeople, quilters, weavers, et cetera. There will be a series of weekend demonstrations and children's activities for 2020. We, oh, also, I should, while I'm, at this juncture, we have an ongoing relationship now with both Ho-HoCom Stadium, with the A's and Sloan. We have exhibits there. We had them this year. Each of those exhibits had, on average, about 1,000 people a day go by, and they have resulted in additional donations from Sloonside, from the Fergie Jenkins Foundation, and at Ho-HoCom Stadium, from the Ho's or the Ho-HoComs, as I still can't get used to saying, calling them the Ho's, but they do that. So, going forward, like I said, in September, we will have this show, and then in 2020, we have already set up two exhibits. Hallelujah Hats, which will be guest curated for us, is a celebration of the Washington Park community, and then we are working with Boeing, Luke Air Force Base, and people from Falcon Field on a history of aviation in Mesa. Then, in progress, we are currently, I am currently working with Fernando Correa, Patricia Mendeville, and Al Mendoza on an exhibit for 2021, on the history of the Hispanic community in Mesa. We, I can announce that we have an ongoing collaboration with the Mesa Police Department to provide programs on history for all of the new recruits. We actually start next week with our first class of recruits at the museum. And, of course, we still plan to renovate and reopen the auditorium on the Lehigh Campus and make it into a community space. So, what challenges do we have? Space, our final frontier. This is the voyage of the Mesa Historical Museum. Our five-year mission to seek out sufficient storage space, to expand our exhibit space, to boldly go where no one has gone before, and renovate and reopen the Lehigh Auditorium. This is not only for us. I grew up in theater, guys. I've got to entertain you at this hour of the morning. This is not only for us. This is a necessity for all of the museums. I know there has been some concern about the accessioning of materials on exhibits that are still at AZMNH. This is a problem both museums have. We do not have sufficient storage space. From the AZMNH side, they can't even be sure that they have what their records say they have that belongs on our side. We have no, we are bursting at the seams at Lehigh. So, for both museums, this is a question, and I know, Mr. Mayor, we have discussed this not in detail, but shortly, to just discuss how both museums can get space. I mean, one of our problems is, we have items, we have three, two Suris, one Stagecoach, a 1911 truck, and a Stanley Steamer, and they are just at various and sundry garages and places around town right now. And if those are to be properly accessioned, according to standards and practices of the American Association of Museums, we need a different space than we've got right now. So, that's our big deal. So, the long-term vision, then, is to take the Lehigh Campus and turn it into our permanent exhibit site, our permanent storage site, and so that we can exhibit the many treasures and provide a usable space to the community, and make this place back into an asset that will, I think, once we get it all dressed up and cleaned up, it's going to add to the economic value of the community, and it's certainly going to provide a place of alternative education, both for schools and now for the police academy here as well. So, that concludes my brief presentation. I thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Thank you, Leroy, for that memorable presentation. You may have grown up in theater. I grew up in the 70s, so the track, start of reference resonated with me. Thank you. Council, questions? Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Leon, for your passion. I mean, this has been a totally great turnaround for the community, not only for Lehigh area, but for the city of Mesa. You know, the preservation of our historical records in the city and everything that you acquired and have acquired is important, that be able to showcase it. And I, I just really enjoy that. I know there's a few more things around the buildings that you still need to do and you're working on towards the east side and around the back area, but I'm, some of the questions I have, as you look at renovating the auditorium, do you have the capacity to do that, or do you think in the future, working with your board, and I might be leading you into something, but working with the city and getting that renovated sooner than later?
I think, the, I know what it's going to cost to just get the first days of it started. I have, I've had that bid out already. Basically, the building has to be gutted, so architects can get in and figure out exactly how much it's going to cost. I'm estimating, the total project is somewhere in the $3 million range. Now, I've done projects like this in other, you know, in California, I renovated a theater that, which was a 1928 space, and it was about three times the size of this, and that cost about $12 million. So, I'm not shy about looking for money or trying to find funds to do that. The development of the board and our capacity for raising that kind of money is something that we have to see. I'm not shy about telling you, I think my predecessor kind of cut us off at the knees in terms of community support, so we have to see if I can rebuild that. I think it's, just forget the warm and fuzzy things about a museum, just returning it to being a community asset, I think, is of great value. It will increase property values in the Lehigh area. It will increase property values, you know, for the city. There are numerous studies around the country that I could quote to tell you, if you've got, you know, cultural institutions that are functioning and that are providing community assets, it just, it improves the entire community. So, do we have the capacity? I can't completely answer that at this time. I'm certainly not afraid of the challenge.
Good.
Going forward.
Good.
So, and we do have, we are gaining momentum in terms of volunteer hours. We have, we've had two scout proj, Eagle Scout projects on the building already. We have another one this summer, and coming up in two weeks, we have an AmeriCorps volunteer project that's going to clean up the back area, and so I know you're, you're concerned about the weeds, as am I, so that'll all be taken care of in the next two weeks.
Good. Just another question on that. I know that we, the city, provided a environmental Phase 1 study of that building, so you do have that to assist you to move.
Yes, I do.
Correct? You have that documentation?
I do.
Great. When does your lease expire with the city? Maybe Natalie might be able to help with some of that. And are we looking towards renewing the lease in the near future? I know there's some leases there.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor Freeman, we have a long-term lease with the Mesa Historical Museum for that property, and, and it's a 30-year lease, and it actually comes for renewal in 2024. But we also have a professional services agreement, and we refer to it as a heritage services agreement, and we negotiate that and update that on an annual basis, and that is the work that is underway right now. And that includes the work that Leon and his staff bring in the professionalism of historic and the management of our resources and the museum, and bringing that forward and making sure, we're trying to bring our collections together. So, it does that. It also has a small amount of about $7,000 per year, so that the city can help with some of the major capital needs that might come up for those historical buildings.
Okay. Good, thank you. The last thing for Mr. Nacker is, are you interfacing with the Salt River community? Because they have a rich, deep heritage there for the Lehigh area.
Yes, I am, right. Yeah, for the next exhibit that's coming up, I'm working with a number of artists from the Salt River community, and through, through them getting into the kind of administrative end of that community, and, you know, and rightly so, there, you know, everybody has been, shall we say, just a little skittish about, you know, working with us. They have, you know, obviously, there has not been any relationship, or if there was a relationship in the past 10 years, it was a negative relationship. So, you know, I've, I've opened my doors to everybody, and people are responding. Bruce Nelson from the Washington Park community was, you know, the first one. He just rushed right in, and so slowly but surely, I think we're building the relationships back with the Salt River community, with the Hispanic community, and so on, and I will continue to do that, because I think that's, you know, part of what the museum does and what it should be doing. So, it's just, and I fully understand why people are skeptical, you know, with the change of administration and skeptical of the organization because of its behavior over the last 10 years. There's no, you know, there was no excuse for it, and we just have to leave that in the past and go forward.
Good. My last question is, are you reaching out to our Mesa Public Schools and other schools to do some tours of the facility?
I am, I am, and we're, we will be providing, we, I'm sending out the mailings to all the third-grade teachers. That's the year now in Mesa Public Schools that they have to do their local history, and we can do with the replicated Adobe Schoolhouse, we do living history lessons for them. And we had some kids in the spring, it, you know, it's very difficult for them to get scheduled field trips and so on. They have to do it long-term, very far in advance. So, I had a couple of charter schools and private schools that came in the spring, and we're hopeful that in the fall, now the, now that they have some advanced notice of our, you know, we're open for business, that the Mesa Public Schools will be able to participate as well.
Good. Thank you. You know, I just really appreciate all that you're doing down there, and it really an asset, again, to our community. So, with that, I don't have any other questions, but thank you. As we move forward, we'll work together. I know I had the opportunity to help with a barbecue there, down there, and that brought in a lot of people.
It did.
And raise awareness that you're back alive and you actually have a pulse.
Yes, indeed.
All right.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Mr. Luna.
First of all, thank you for your hard work. I appreciate your enthusiasm, everything you're doing for the museum. I want you to let, let you know that, please reach out to us, especially those that are connected with the Latino community, because I see you've got the Guerrero family, we've got the Mendoza family, the Mendeville family, there's the Austin family. So, there's another, a number of families that have been here in Mesa since the pioneers settled in the area. So, certainly, we can connect you to those, and we want you to do that, and I appreciate you trying to revitalize that history. When I worked at Mesa Public Schools, we actually did video of the old schoolhouse when it was located, the Arizona Historical, the museum down there.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, we have video, I know they have videos that, what that, what that looked like, and we have materials, video materials that may help you as well. And so, we can also connect you with the Mesa Public Schools and provide that, those kind of things with, for you. And I was just talking to the mayor, that you might want to look at the 12% funding through the Salt River AmeriCorps, Pemerae Copa community, as far as support of the museum, because those are the kind of activities that they, they love to support. So, and we can help you connect, we can connect to them as well.
That would be great. I will reach out to your staff, and we'll see what we can do over the summer, get things going.
Mr. Thompson.
Leon, thank you. As my colleague Mark Freeman said, you're kind of a breath of fresh air, because the previous administration over there, I was not a big fan of. And so, there's, there's going to be some time for me to accept the Mesa Historical Museum, not that I'm a...
I fully understand.
I'm not anti, because I truly love the culture of Mesa, and I believe that every city should have culture, and I love the museums that we have. I don't frequent them as often as I probably should, typically because I just let them do their thing, and I trust that they're going to do the best that they can. You know, I know that we have one of the largest, and we, and we spoke about this when you first came in, we have one of the largest spring training collections, probably in the entire state of Arizona, and I think we could do a better job, either partnering with the Mesa Arts Center or the Convention Center or something, other than just a few items here and there at Sloan or at Ho-Com, at, at the A's Stadium, to do a better job of displaying during spring training, all of the assets that we have. I mean, it's a, it's a deep history of spring training in baseball, especially with the Cubs as well, and so I'd really like to see that beefed up a little bit. The other thing is, when talking about schools, don't forget Gilbert and Queen Creek. I'm one of the only districts, I think, that has three school districts, and so a third of the Gilbert School districts is in my district, District 6, as is Queen Creek. So, we do have a elementary school, Queen Creek Elementary School, that's out in District 6 as well. So, don't forget those. And the other thing, I was looking at your before and after picture, and I was kind of impressed that there's this little bitty Sora here on one side, and then the next picture, it actually has an arm on it, and so it took about, about 100 years to, to clean that up and fix it, so pretty impressive.
I was not aware of the overlap of school districts in, in your district. If, could I reach out to your staff and contact them, so that I can get some contact information? That would be wonderful. That would be terrific, because, you know, I, the museum is about the people, I mean, it's about artifacts, yes, but the artifacts are of no value if they sit in boxes. And I agree with you. I would like to do, we will expand our spring training presence. As a matter of fact, part of the, the Hallelujah Hats exhibit with, about Washington Park, we are going to be bringing in, and we're partnering with, at the Arts Center for space there, a documentary called The Other Boys of Summer, which was just recently made, and it refers, it's a, it's a history of the Negro League. And we'll be arranging a showing of that, along with a panel discussion afterwards with members from both Sloan and the A's and so on, and making that an activity this coming spring. So, we, we have plans to, to expand it. It's just, it's all a matter of funding.
Well, I know that you were at the, the Cactus League kickoff.
Yeah.
Marching this year, and I've tried to go every year. Obviously, I'm a big fan of baseball in general, and I remember a couple of years, you know, they, they do sort of the similar thing every year, is those that they induct, they bring in, and they talk about baseball. And a couple of years ago, they had some of the guys that were in there in the old Negro Leagues, and they were talking about what it was like to play in Scottsdale and some of the other cities, and, and if there's an opportunity during spring training to bring something like that into the Arts Center, where you can bring people in and, and have that conversation, and talk about what it was like to play, you know, baseball in Mesa, you know, back in the 50s or whatever, I mean, to, to me, that's something that I think the community would wrap around, especially if you could pull those people up from Sloan or, or from Ho-Com during spring training and bring them up on a lecture series type, type event. So, sky's the limit. Keep doing what you're doing.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Leon, again, thank you. We appreciate not just you, but the great board that brought you to Mesa. So Anita, please let your board know that we appreciate the, the hard work that went into getting the museum from where it was to where it is now. And certainly Leon deserves a lot of the credit, but it has to be shared with the, the board and the great volunteers that, that you have there. So congratulations. I'll just say amen to some of the other comments. I love the Lehigh location. I don't know why we ever thought that we weren't blessed with a great location for this museum.
I don't either.
It's, it's perfect in my estimation. The exhibit that you had, that just concluded, fantastic. And particularly because of the, the docent that gave the tour.
Ah, Jack, yes. But he is a great asset.
Yes. So, yeah, I, I think every, you know, we ought to have, you know, a mile of school buses lined up and every school kid in Mesa, including, you know, Gilbert and Queen Creek Schools ought to be taking that tour and, and developing an appreciation for the real rich heritage and, and history that we have in our city. So thank you for doing that. I am thrilled that we are reestablishing the damaged relationship with the Lehigh community. And the, that, it is a beloved institution in our community and particularly ought to be so in, in Lehigh. So thank you for doing that. The, the future exhibits you're talking about sound fantastic. Looking forward to, to supporting those as well. I think you're going to see a lot of, I appreciate the, the five-year mission that you're embarking on. We do need to help you and support you with the capital campaign. And so I'm anxious for you to sit down with folks at the city to see to what extent you might be eligible for some partnerships with the city through CDBG or other ways. So let's make sure that you have that, that meeting as well so that we take full advantage of, of every pot of money that might be out there that could help you. We, I think we do, Mr. Brady, I would like to know more about the, an inventory of our storage capabilities in the city. Because it seems like we do have, I mean, between the Natural History Museum, between what's, what we have out at Lehigh, between, you know, the basement of the federal building, between, I mean, I, it seems, it, I'd just be curious to, I'm sure there are people that have thought about this, but that's part of the challenges, I think, that Leon faces. And Mr. Freeman, I think a year or so ago, asked a question during one of our meetings about the National Guard Armory and the fact that we have these large buildings that appear to be totally...
That's not big enough.
Ignored. Okay.
It's, we need a lot of space.
We need a lot of space.
I'm glad you, you appreciate that. I mean, the staff that, and my staff, the staff at AZMNH is, you know, they're, I, I keep asking them about things that show up on, you know, Excel spreadsheets and they go, we think we've got it, we have no idea where it is.
But yeah, it's, it's a worthwhile, I mean, we need to look at it and come up with a comprehensive, but it's a, it's a big, it's a big issue. That's why the Natural History Museum has a lot of their stuff out there and so, and they have it at the basement of the federal building, they have it in the building across from the museum, a whole building that's already occupied. Those dinosaur bones take up a lot of space.
Yep.
About 200 stuffs there. It's not a warehouse.
People.
People, yeah. People and computers.
Well, that, that's a challenge that your organization faces that we share.
Yeah, no, we, we as a shared, yeah.
It'll be, I, I look forward to maybe some collaboration on what we can do to help.
Yeah, perhaps if we could get the staffs of all the museums together and, you know, kind of discuss what the needs are and see if there's something available. I mean, anywhere in the city would be, would be an advantage to all of us.
Great. Well, thank you. Great presentation and we look forward to working closely together.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item on our agenda for this meeting, item 2B, to hear a presentation and discuss an overview of the Falcon Field Airport, including its current year budget, forecasted outcomes and fiscal year 1920 projections, the updated airport master plan and the airport's economic benefit analysis study. Karine, good to have you with us.
Good morning, Mayor, council members. Let's see. Yeah, do you know how to do it? Got it. Okay. Oh, there we go. Good morning. My name is Karine Neistrom. I'm the Airport Director at Falcon Field and it's my pleasure to introduce two individuals who are going to be assisting with making this presentation. On my right is Matt Quick, who is a member of Kaufman Associates, the consulting firm that has been assisting us with the master plan update. And on my left is Dr. Lee McFeeters with Arizona State University. ASU completed a, an economic benefits analysis for Falcon Field Airport specifically. And today, we're just going to give you a brief highlight of the results of the master plan and the economic benefits analysis. But before we do that, I want to give you a very brief update on the status of Falcon Field and our budget. As all of you know, Falcon Field is an enterprise fund within the city. We are financially self-sustaining and none of the revenues that we generate are coming from the city's general fund. They're all generated from the revenues that we collect out at the airport. So in 2018, 19, and of course, these are our forecasted numbers, since we still have a month, two weeks left in the year, but we're anticipating our operating revenues will be coming in at about 4.4 million. Our operating expenses at about 2.9 million and our capital improvement expenditures at about a million for this fiscal year. For 2019, 20, we're anticipating operating revenues of approximately 4.5 million, operating expense at 3.8 million. Now, keep in mind, that includes, this is just a forecast, this is just a projection, that includes some projects that initially are spent out of the operating expense but are eventually capitalized. So once those projects are completed, then they will be considered capital improvement projects. So that number will decline. And then our capital improvement expenditures coming in at about 1.2 million for next year. Some of the things that we're going to be focusing on for this next fiscal year include increasing our funding for economic development to market and promote the airport, which we're already doing that specifically. We're promoting business development on the airport. Obviously, maintaining our airfield at a very high standard is important for us and our goal is to maintain it at a higher standard than other general aviation airports. We want to make sure that our fees and our rates and our charges are competitive and of course, we want to remain financially self-sustaining. Just to give you a highlight of a couple of things that are happening here at the airport right now, we have a 5,600 square foot corporate hangar that is under construction. These are, this is privately funded. We have a second corporate hangar, 8,300 square feet, which is privately funded, that is currently going through the design review process. And then you may have recently heard about the new development that's going in on the airport, 23-acre development with over 340,000 square feet of aircraft hangar space. That project is currently in design and we're working with those developers to make that all happen because it's part of our Opportunity Zone Improvement Program. And so that project will be completed in late 2021. So you're going to be seeing a lot of new improvements going in at Falcon Field over the next two years. So with that, I will turn it over to Matt Quick with Kaufman to talk a little bit about the master plan.
Great. Thank you, Karine, and good morning, Mayor, City Council members. I want to thank you guys for the opportunity to come and share briefly about some of the highlights of the master plan that we've been working on with the city and airport staff over the course of the last year and a half. And just briefly to, to set the stage for a master plan and what it is, it's really a visioning document. It's a document that's prescribed by the Federal Aviation Administration. They recommend that airports update their master plans every 10 years on average, depending upon the demand that's happening at the airport. I can tell you that the last master plan for Falcon Field was updated in early 2010 and approved by City Council at that time. So it was certainly a timely reassessment of what's happening at the airport over the last several years and, and the city's right on track in terms of being able to stay efficient and operational from the standpoint of FAA's perspective in updating a master plan. A master plan looks at several things. It evaluates the aviation demand that's occurring at the airport. It does that to help project facility needs that are needed at the airport over the course of the next several years. A master plan's a 20-year document, so we look 20 years out into the future. We, it helps assist airport staff as well as the city in terms of identifying a capital improvement program that they can take before the Federal Aviation Administration as well as ADOT's Aeronautics Group on a yearly basis. And then it also helps formulate an airport layout plan. That's one of the key components of a master plan at the tail end of the process. We're in the process right now of coordinating an airport layout plan with the FAA and that will be really what the, the roadmar, or the roadmap is for the future development of the airport and, and help the city and the airport assist in getting future funding assistance, whether it's through the FAA or as well as ADOT's Aeronautics Group. Benefit of the master plan, it's brought awareness to the airport. We've had a series of planning advisory committee meetings over the course of the master plan study, several public information workshops. So key stakeholders, tenants, constituents of the airport, the FAA, the state, the city level have all taken part in this process and it's been very good in terms of just being able to make awareness of the airport and what's happening during the process. I talked about aviation demand. For an airport such as Falcon Field, there are really two main indicators for that. One is the number of based aircraft at the airport and the other is the number of annual aircraft operations. When we began this study, there was over 700 aircraft based at the airport, approximately 300,000 annual aircraft operations. So this is obviously a very significant facility in terms of the activity levels as you all are aware of what's going on. Again, a master plan looking 20 years into the future, based upon what's happening in the, happening in the aviation industry from a national standpoint and even more important from a regional and local standpoint, we do see potential growth in some of those demand indicators as it relates to based aircraft and annual operations. I think one of the keys that we've taken away during this study process is just the, the growth in the business and corporate activity at the airport over the last several years, especially since the last master plan was conducted about 10 years ago. So again, translating that aviation demand, looking at the possibility of over 1,000 based aircraft by the year 2038 timeframe, the 20-year planning period, and then upwards of approximately 400,000 annual operations during that time. The airport is capable of handling that based upon the amount of development potential at the airport as well as the airfield system. I talked about the capital improvement program. This is just a snapshot of what that looks like. We've identified several projects and Karine talked about the airport, making sure they stay on top of the safety design standards and airfield standards that are set forth by the Federal Aviation Administration. And the master plan helps the city and the airport take a look at that. We've identified several projects to help satisfy future aviation demand, make sure the facility continues to operate at a safe and efficient level, as well as identifying rehabilitation projects, mainly as it relates to airfield pavements. It's important to note with the next slide that a lot of these projects are eligible for FAA and, as well as ADOT Aeronautics Group funding assistance. Overall, the total number of projects that we've identified, approximately $27.3 million in potential needs at the airport over the next several years. Again, a lot of those are related to various safety, rehabilitation and demand-driven projects. But over 90% of that total is eligible for FAA and state grant funding assistance and, and the airport and the city has certainly got a good relationship with those entities and will continue to coordinate with those on a regular basis in terms of being able to get that assistance that's needed for a future growth and development of the airport.
All right. And now Dr. McFeeters will talk about our economic benefits analysis.
Okay, thank you. Mayor and council members, we were invited at ASU to participate in the master plan and conduct the economic benefit study, which measures really the economic contribution of the airport in a quantitative way. We emphasize three indicators of economic activity. Job creation on the airport, the payroll, income, wages and compensation associated with those jobs. And then we look at output, which is also revenue, sales. In the case of public sector agencies, the output would be measured as the agency budget. The way you do that, to conduct one of these studies, is you go on to the airport and you actually survey airport tenants, employers. And in this particular airport, we were very pleased to find out that airport staff has a very well-developed data set on, on airport employment that they update periodically whenever circumstances change, new tenants come in and so forth. So we're particularly pleased with the on-airport employment numbers. They are very, very accurate. We did not have to depend on sending out surveys and getting those back. We had person-to-person contact with employers done by airport staff. So that was very helpful. So you have on-airport employment in the form of jobs related to aviation. At Falcon Field, there's also a large non-aviation component. In addition to that, part of the economic contribution of the airport has to do with the fact that airports always seem to be in some phase of expansion, construction, rehabilitation, or at a very minimum, maintenance. And that creates jobs as well, payroll, revenues for contractors that, that come on to the airport. And then another source of economic benefit that we looked at is from general aviation visitors. People that arrive at the airport as itinerant aircraft and they come to the community just like tourists would, except they arrive in general aviation aircraft. They spend for lodging, hotel, restaurant, you know, entertainment. They come for spring training games, whatever attraction. And of course, there's a, a large component of, of business travel. So we measure that impact as well. So you put that together and you have then the economic contribution of the airport. Then you have to incorporate the fact that dollars that have come into the community recycle through a process of spending and respending. We would call this a multiplier effect or a ripple effect. And we have an input-output model for Maricopa County that we use. And so we applied that to the data that we had and were able to capture these second round or secondary benefits. You put your initial benefits, the direct benefits, the secondary benefits together and you have then the total benefits of Falcon Field Airport. So if we can, you know, look at some of these numbers, you know, for a general aviation airport, we're really looking at some significant numbers here. The on-airport employment, aviation, non-aviation was 1,486. That was as of about mid-month, November of 2018. And as I say, that, that was a very precise number actually obtained through face-to-face with employers. We had estimates of the output, the revenue from on-airport businesses. We developed estimates of general aviation visitor spending, put those together. We had then our direct benefits, which amounted to 1,619 jobs directly created by the presence of the airport. We accounted for the second round multiplier effects, combined them then to get the overall total economic benefit of the airport. And this is where you get these bottom line numbers that you see on the, the table. 4,009 jobs created in total by the presence of the airport. That would be the economic contribution, the economic benefit of Falcon Field Airport. And that would be a number that, you know, if you were, you know, going to produce brochures, public information or whatnot, you would be using that total number that includes the multiplier effect. And that gives you then a total economic benefit in dollar terms of 811,000 dollars, which is very, 811 million, which is very significant. of $811,000, which is very, 811 million, which is very significant in comparison of general aviation airports, as I'll show you just momentarily. Taking these numbers, it's kind of hard to kind of get some context for what, you know, an 800 million economic benefit amounts to, and what we like to do is to break this down in different ways. And one way of looking at the economic benefit is to just say what happens in a typical day. Airports, for the most part, seven days a week. Many airports operate 24/7. At Falcon Field, you go out there tomorrow, there's going to be activity on the airport. The daily aircraft operations, over 700 daily aircraft operations, very, very significant. But if you come down to the bottom line of our daily activity table there, you can see that daily economic benefits incorporating all the multiplier effects, $2.2 million generated daily, which is pretty significant, as I say, for a general aviation airport. Now, when we look at airports, we usually allow for the fact that there will be business activity around an airport, and if that activity is on airport property, it is immediately incorporated into the, the economic benefit analysis. If it is neighboring property, it is looked at to determine what is the nature of the relationship with the airport, and one of the things you look for is whether there is runway access, and another thing, of course, you look for is whether, in fact, this is an aviation type of business. And previous studies that have been done for Falcon Field Airport have always incorporated the presence of Boeing as an alternative way of looking at the economic footprint of that entire area. That is, you have Falcon Field, you have the neighboring Boeing facility with runway access, movement back and forth, corporate aircraft coming in to visit Boeing, arriving at Falcon Field, and of course, you know, Boeing using Falcon Field for some of their own purposes as well. When we incorporate Boeing then into the overall economic benefit, you're looking at a $3.6 billion operation. Adding that together then gives us a bottom-line economic benefit in that area from aviation, incorporated Falcon Field and Boeing, and of course, you have significant manufacturing right on airport property as well. You have $6.8 billion economic benefit, 23,000-plus jobs in that area, and there are other businesses that are related to aviation and high-tech in the area as well as you move out from the airport. So that is another way, an alternative way, completely legitimate way of looking at the economic footprint that is created out there in that Falcon Field area. Final thing that I have here, we have done a number of these economic benefit studies for airports over the years, and I just took a look at studies that we'd done in the last five years, all using the same methodology, and setting aside the whole idea of the multiplier, because different localities have different multiplier relationships. But if you look at just what is happening on the airport, what are the direct jobs on the airport, the aviation, non-aviation jobs on given airports, and compare those across airports, you get a sense of how significant the Falcon Field contribution is by comparing to some very well-established airports in the area. Scottsdale, of course, would be the one you would first think of. Now, Scottsdale Air Park has an employment for the entire airpark of about 50,000 workers, but what we looked at is that component of the airpark that has runway connection, you know, through-the-fence authorization, and included that then as part of the on-airport activity. That gave us 1,400 jobs at Scottsdale. Deer Valley, another very active airport, one of the most active airports in the country, 965 jobs. Goodyear, Chandler are, would be in the category, I think, of emerging airports. Chandler certainly is growing, but one of the smaller airports in terms of output and employment right now. But in looking at these, the $434 million on-airport activity that we measure at Falcon Field, as I say, for a general aviation airport is really very, very significant, and given all the potential growth that you've heard about today, I would say that certainly within the next 10 years, we're going to be talking about Falcon Field as a billion-dollar asset for, for the Mesa community.
All right. So that concludes our presentation. We would be happy to respond to any questions or comments that you have.
Thank you very much. Mr. Luna.
Thank you, Corinne and gentlemen, for your presentation. I actually attended some of the, the meetings to learn more about the master plan, what that's going to involve. Any idea what the economic impact is going to be on the new hangars that we're going to be building, the 340,000 square-foot hangars just north, is it northwest?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Luna, with, you're referring to the 23-acre development. The initial estimates, just in terms of the capital improvement dollars that are going to be invested in that is somewhere in the neighborhood of $40 million that will be invested in that. And they're still working, finalizing the, the number and sizes of the hangars that they're working on, but you're looking at probably over 20 hangars that are going to be constructed, and of course, a number of those hangars will more than likely be rented by various aviation businesses that will be bringing more jobs into the community in addition to facilitating the expansion of some of the existing airport, airport tenants. We have several on the airport right now that have outgrown their current location, and they are needing additional space, so we do anticipate that that number will be substantial.
And are we also seeing a trend in terms of what CAE does in training more pilots, and are we going to see more of an economic impact as he, as they continue to train airline pilots from all over the world?
Mayor and Councilmember Luna, and council members, yes, CAE continues to be a very strong employer on the airport right now. They employ over 200 people. Those are in terms of management, administration, and flight instructors. They are continuing to train pilots from around the world, but in case you're not aware, they have, over the last couple of years, they've now signed contracts with domestic airlines, specifically with JetBlue, and they are also now training American Airlines pilots to train them from the ground up and help them achieve their 1,500 hours of flight instruction so that they can sit in the right seat of an American Airlines jet.
And then one question, now, we've had over 300,000 operations, if you will, a year, and we continue to grow. How does that affect our flight-friendly program, and are we seeing uptick on complaints, or are we taking care of those?
Actually, Mayor, Councilmember Luna, and council members, we have taken a very proactive approach with our Voluntary Noise Abatement Program and worked with our, our pilots, and we work very, very closely with CAE as well as the FAA Air Traffic Control Tower, and the number of, even though we're, we're ranging 29,000 to 30,000 operations a month out there at the airport, the number of households that are expressing concerns about aircraft noise ranges in the neighborhood of zero to six households a month, and that, that, when you compare that to the number of operations that we have, that's a very, very small number, but it's because the tenants and the users, the airport and the FAA are taking that all very seriously and are trying very, very hard to be good neighbors.
Well, thank you, Corinne, and your staff for doing an outstanding job. You know, we, their, it's been there since 1941. It's part of this, the Mesa community in terms of preserving our history, and I appreciate what you're doing in terms of working with those tenants that want to do that, preserve the RAF history of the Falcon Field Airport, and I, I'm glad that you're working with them to do that, but it's, it's an economic engine for our community, and it brings in a lot of, provides a lot of employment opportunities as, as well as jobs in the surrounding area. So thank you for your leadership, thank you for your team for the master plan, and I look forward to working with you.
Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. I appreciate that. Again, Corinne, I, I know that the airport's been a part of my life forever since I grew up in Mesa, and I really enjoyed going out there and swimming in the old swimming pool that's no longer there. But regardless, my question is, you had mentioned applying for some funding for the airport CIP projects on, I think, slides seven and eight, but how, how successful are we in getting those monies to facilitate the expansion of the airport?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Freeman, and council members, we've been very successful with that. As a matter of fact, here, within the next couple of weeks, we will be bringing a proposed grant to council from the Federal Aviation Administration for a project out at the airport, a capital improvement project. That grant is going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $1.2 million. So we, we are very assertive with working with both the FAA and ADOT to try to ensure that we do get a grant, at least one grant, from each of those on an annual basis.
They like us because we spend money fast.
Okay. So we have shovel-ready projects.
Right. We work very hard to be ready to go.
Yes.
Good. My last question is, you had mentioned about, you know, building the additional hangar space and, and with private partnerships, and I guess, helping with that. What, how does that work with our partnerships? Do we receive monies from those partnerships and over annually from the development, or, or do they capture all the monies back from their development of the hangar space?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Freeman, and council members, we do generate revenue, or we do collect revenue from those developers through the ground leases that we sign with them. They pay us an annual rent to lease the space on which they are building and managing their hangars. So yes, it's a good revenue source for us.
But Mayor, Council, Councilman Freeman, you mentioned the Opportunity Zone, and that's a federal program.
Yes.
And that's, that, that's the program that we presented to council, I don't know, it's been a while, but that, we, we had to go through the state process to identify areas in the city that would be eligible for Opportunity Zone projects, and this, the airport was, on, airport was one of those, and so that's what's attracted these particular developers here. So both, they'll negotiate, they've negotiated a land, excuse me, a land lease with the airport, but then they'll go through the process of getting credits through the federal government with the Opportunity Zone.
Mr. Thompson.
Corinne, thank you for the informative presentation. What continues to be, or what do you see as the biggest impediment to the future of Gateway, or future Falcon Field, sorry?
Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, and council members, I, I would say one of the greatest impediments is that we need to make sure as a community that we protect the airport, and that includes not only Falcon Field, but Phoenix-Mesa Gateway from any type of encroachment that might jeopardize the continued operations of those airports.
So, because I've been, I've been trying to wrap my head around the property at Wrecker and Brown, and, or Thomas, I'm sorry, and subdivision work there, and whether it's going to conflict with Falcon Field or, or the success of Falcon Field, is, is there concerns on your side, or is that far enough out from the, from the, from the flight path of the aircraft that you're comfortable with that being there?
Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, and other council members, that particular location does not create a lot of concern from the airport's perspective. I think it is far enough north that there won't be aircraft necessarily flying directly over those homes. Now, those people will be hearing aircraft, but at that point, they're going to be a little higher in the air, and they won't necessarily be right on the path of either the, the arrivals or the departures. So on, the, the property that, that the city owned, that it is working to, that the auction was held at, that, that parcel, I believe, is far enough north that it's not going to create a huge problem.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I do, you, you bring up a good point, Councilmember Thompson, but it's no different than what the aircraft are already flying over Red Mountain Ranch in that area in that perspective. I think that line is sight, so.
More of a direct.
Red Mountain is more of a direct flight than
Yes.
the property at Wrecker and Thomas.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Other questions for these folks? All right, thank you very much. Very proud of Falcon Field, appreciate the great work you're doing.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. The next item on our agenda for this meeting is item three, that's to acknowledge receipt of board minutes. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Mr. Thompson and Mr. Luna. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next item is to hear reports on meetings and conferences attended. Anything you'd like to share with us? Yes, Mr. Luna?
I have to look it on my calendar because I can't remember. You know, what can I say?
Yes.
So, let's see. Councilmember Duff and I had the opportunity to meet the new Mexican Council General, Jorge Mendoza Isaquecas, and it was a great opportunity to meet with him because we do work with them in terms of issues related to immigration, but they also are a partner in sponsoring our Dia de los Muertos activity that we do at the Mesa Art Center. So it was great to meet him, and I, we look forward to working with him. I know that Mesa Police Department works closely with the Council General from Phoenix, and hopefully, they'll continue working with him. Seems like a great guy, he's a young guy, and he's eager to work with the city of Mesa.
Great. Yes, we do quite a bit with the Council General, so that's, that's great. Yes, Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended a ribbon-cutting for Vantage West Credit Union yesterday representing the city. It's over at the Stapley and McKellips area. So a new credit union, I think they headquartered out of Tucson, they're expanding their operations here in Mesa, so great asset to the community and welcome them here. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yesterday, the mayor and I attended another ribbon-cutting, Tines Microwave Systems in District Three, West Mesa impressive facility. They went from about 8,000, 9,000 square feet to 65, over 65,000 square feet of manufactured space for the aerospace and defense industry, so great addition, more manufactured jobs here Mesa, in West Mesa specifically, so great, great economic boost here. Also, first series of our Asian multicultural district conversations with small business owners along the Dobson Corridor happened yesterday at NCC. There's another meeting for folks that live in the area or folks that are interested in helping out next Wednesday, the 19th, from 8:30 to 9:30 at EBIT, so if folks are interested, please attend. So great conversation with small business owners and owners that own property there along Dobson, the Dobson Corridor, sir. Thank you.
Let me just say, amen. I, I appreciated the chance to go to that, that meeting with you, well, both events with you yesterday, and I think it is important that we ask for more community engagement on this idea of the, the developing an Asian corridor along the Dobson Road corridor. It really is, organically, it's developed into this very multicultural, very cool part of Mesa, and so we need to celebrate that and, and market it and brand it, much like we have Falcon and other parts of the city. So, like you say, the next meeting is next Wednesday, but anyone that wants to weigh in on how we ought to brand that and, and develop that and celebrate that, please engage with us so that we can do this correctly. Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
I'll throw mine out there too, but yeah, I, I agree, there's some great restaurants in that corridor, some of my favorites in the city. Yesterday, Mayor, you and I also had a ribbon-cutting in District Six for the, I'm trying to find it now, it's the Landing at PMG, but I believe that was about 281,000 square feet of Class A office spec, 40,000, which they've already got leased before they even built, opened the doors, and so it's right there just north of Gateway on Sausman and Ray Road, and that, that whole area has really taken off. And that whole area has really taken off becoming really industrial, manufacturing and so forth through there. So it's an up-and-coming area, for sure.
Yeah, absolutely. It's hard to miss. Ray Road north of the airport is, for anybody who hasn't been there in a couple of months, there's a whole new city that's sprouted up right there. It looks great. Couple of things I'd like to share. I had an opportunity last weekend to attend the first North American Mayor's Summit in Mexico. This was a very significant event. It was mayors from Canada and United States and Mexico. Extremely timely event, given that the USMCA negotiations are going on right now, redoing NAFTA, the importance of the Canadian and Mexican markets on Mesa, Arizona. So I felt very privileged to be there and thought it was a particularly relevant discussion for Mesa, Arizona to participate in. It was a high-level meeting. President Lopez Obrador came and addressed us, as did several of the cabinet members. Business leaders like Carlos Slim participated. Again, tariffs, the asylum seeker issue, the USMCA were all very much on the agenda. I was privileged to be asked to give a presentation on sustainability, what we're doing in the city of Mesa. And I spoke about our food-to-energy program, which is fascinating. I took a tour of what we're doing last week prior to going, so I could speak on it. But you, we've all got a presentation on this side, but if you haven't had a chance to go out and tour this, I would encourage you to do so. This is this fascinating experiment that we're in with ASU where we're collecting food waste from restaurants and schools. We're grocery stores, mulching it into liquid form. Hummus, thank you. It looks like hummus. That's a nice word for it. Thank you. Looks like hummus. And then we're studying the impact of putting that into our digesters out at the water treatment plant.
There's a cool video too on it.
Yes. And so that produces renewable natural gas. It's in, you know, the idea is that's how we're going to power our fleet of vehicles. So the garbage trucks that go by and pick up the food waste will be powered by the renewable natural gas that's created by the food waste. And that's really a fascinating idea that has very broad applications. Mesa's uniquely situated to do this because we own a natural gas company and a wastewater facility. And I mean, we soup to nuts operation.
We have lots of food waste.
We have lots of food waste. So anyway, that, if you bump into a mayor from Canada or Mexico, they might say, oh yeah, you're that city that's doing food to gas in Mesa, Arizona. So anyway, I was pleased to brag about the progressive things that we're doing in Mesa at that event. Thank you. Other things we'd like to talk about. Mr. Brady, what's our schedule look like?
We'll see you Monday, Mayor. We'll have the study session and the city council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. We are adjourned.[1773.37][1773.37][music][1774.37][1774.37][applause]